So it's so nice to see so many happy people here in the chambers this evening. And I'm waiting for a couple of conversations to wrap up about Western football. We're all set on that, right? All right. So it is seven o'clock. And so I'm going to call to order the business meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, May thirteenth, 2024. And our first order of business is roll call. Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borley. So it is so nice to be here with a full contingent of my colleagues. I appreciate that. As everybody's probably aware, we've changed our schedule a little bit this year, and that seems to throw off the rhythm. But we're having a meeting tonight and then a meeting in a week. So stay ready for that. For opening ceremony this evening, we're blessed to have Bishop Daniel Cunningham here with us from the Empowerment Center to provide an invocation. And before I ask him to come forward, I just want to remind people that when he does come forward, I'm going to ask everybody to stand, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and will give us a good start to our meeting. Bishop Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners. It's good to see everybody this evening. Father, we thank you for the opportunity and for this chamber for us to come together to be guided by your principles. I pray for your wisdom and sensitivity upon this group of leaders, for proper direction, for our community, for our neighborhood, our city, Lord. Let us walk with courage and let us discern and not be influenced by anything outside but to help bridge together all people regardless of their economic and social background. Father, I speak equality, equity, and justice for all, and that we in Kalamazoo, in this area, become a beacon of light for other cities to look and gravitate around. Father, I pray upon this commission, Lord, that there be a commission that leave a legacy that be a voice of action for those that are undeserved, for those that need a voice, Lord. We speak that the resources that we put into our city in this area would not just go to the nucleus, but to all areas of our city. I speak your choices blessing upon each of the Commissioners, our Mayor, City Manager, and those that represent this leadership board, and upon their family in Yahshua's name and Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Bishop Cunningham. I appreciate it. Well, we have three proclamations this evening, which is always a nice thing to be able to do, recognize people. And our first proclamation, I do not believe there will be anybody here to accept it, but as remembering an important person here in Kalamazoo who also served on this commission. And that proclamation is going to be read by Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation remembering David Juarez. Whereas David Juarez was a man of deep faith who sought to make the world a better place and help all people. And whereas David's focus on helping his community led to an annual culturally diverse block party in the Edison neighborhood, a Neighborhood Watch, a gun buyback event, and after-school programs run by him and a fellow commissioner and friend. And whereas in 2003, David was the first Hispanic elected as City Commissioner in the city of Kalamazoo, where he served a full four-year term. And whereas after retiring and moving to Arizona, he ran a father's program, helping men become better fathers, assisting with employment, training, and counseling, and volunteered his time working with the youth at the juvenile detention center. And whereas David was a powerful force for change who started every day with God. Now therefore, on behalf of David Anderson, Mayor of the city of Kalamazoo and the 55th City Commission, we do hereby celebrate the life of love and giving of David Juarez, who left this earth on March the 21st, 2024. David will be missed while his legacy of community and fellowship will be remembered by all who knew him.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cooney. I appreciate that. I had the honor of serving with David Juarez as well for a bit of time. I didn't know him as well as you did, but it was a pleasure to serve with him, appreciate him, and every community is a better place if there's people like David around that care. Next, we have a special recognition, and I have to, this is something, it's a first for the city of Kalamazoo, I guess, maybe for the world. And I have to say thank you to my mayor, Bobby Hopewell, who brought this specifically to our attention and made sure that we were here tonight to recognize it. So this is recognizing Madison Barch from K College, and it will be read by Vice Mayor Hess, and I will come down with the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. I'd also like to say, having spent a career at K, I know how much this means and how important this is in the life of athletics at Kalamazoo College. And just, it's not in this proclamation, but you have also recently received a Senior Leadership Award from Kalamazoo College. So congratulations on that. Here's a proclamation recognizing Maddie or Madison Barch, May 13th, 2024. Whereas Maddie Barch matriculated to Kalamazoo College from Utica High School in the fall of 2020 as a biochemistry major and was recruited to be a member of the football team. And whereas, knowing from Coach Jamie Zorbo that if she showed up, worked hard, and did all the things asked of her, asked of everyone else on the team, she would thrive in the K College football program and earn the respect of everyone within it. She went over and above. Maddie embraced the K College culture to its fullest, serving on the football team's leadership council, and she worked hard every day to be the best version of herself in the classroom and on the playing field. And whereas, not only did she make an impact on the team, but she left her mark on campus as well, earning Dean's List honors all four years, inducted into Chi Alpha Sigma, serving as a president's student ambassador for two years, working in the admissions office as a tour guide, and inspiring young boys and girls at youth football camp, and will graduate with a 3.77 GPA. And whereas, Maddie is the first female to make the football team in Kalamazoo College history. And while on the team, Maddie had other firsts as well. Not only did she become the first female in Kalamazoo College and MIAA, our conference, football history, to score a point on a kicking attempt, she became the first female in NCAA football history to score a non-kicking point when she caught a pass on a two-point conversion in the 2023 season finale. And whereas, she is the epitome of a student athlete, having earned the respect of the team and coaches with her work ethic, leadership, academic commitment, and courage. With her love of football and her commitment to the ideals of a student athlete, Maddie has unlocked doors and broken through the glass ceilings throughout sports, but especially in football. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission and David F. Anderson, Mayor of the city of Kalamazoo, we do hereby recognize Maddie Barch and her contributions to Kalamazoo College athletics and congratulate her on this historic achievement. Congratulations, Maddie.
First and foremost, I need to thank the Lord. I'm very rooted in my Catholic faith, and that is everything to me, so need to thank him first. I'd like to thank Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Hess, and then former Mayor Hopewell for setting this up and actually, you know, setting it up in my front yard because I live between them both. I need to thank Coach Zorbo. I also have Coach Dangle here. They've been wonderful these past few years, and I owe everything to them. And then lastly, I need to thank my family, especially my two wonderful parents here for everything they do for me. I love to say that everything I accomplish is directly a reflection of how they've raised me and all the sacrifices they've made and the love they put into raising me and my three sisters. So thank you, everyone, especially you two.
Thank you. Very nice meeting you. That's pretty amazing. Next, we are recognizing something that is very, very important, and it's really something that, although it seems like we're talking about it more lately with all the work that's going on under the streets and the happiness and unhappiness that can create, it is indeed, what is the second biggest department, I guess, in the city of Kalamazoo is public services. And we have our own Director Baker here for this. Proclamation is for Public Services Week. And Commissioner Decker, you're going to be reading that, right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Department of Public Services, Week 2024, May 19th through May 25th. Whereas, the Department of Public Service Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, groundwater, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Kalamazoo. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, groundwater, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public service professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of the organization, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our community's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, public service employees are committed to providing dedicated service to the community to which we live and work. And whereas, it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Kalamazoo to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of our Public Services Department and Public Services Programs in our community. And whereas, the city of Kalamazoo recognizes the Department of Public Services essential to the welfare of our community and acknowledges the importance of educating the public about all the services provided by our Public Services Professionals during Public Services Week campaign, May 19th through the 25th of 2024. We encourage all residents to participate in the various activities, Tuesday, Water; Wednesday, Waste Water; and Thursday, Public Works, at various public services facilities to learn about this important and essential work. Therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission and David Anderson, Mayor of the city of Kalamazoo, announce and proclaim the third week, the third full week of May as Public Services Week. I urge all citizens to join me as we pay tribute to our public services professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life.
We'd like to thank the Mayor, City Commission, City Manager for helping to put this all together. Again, this is a great opportunity for the public to come in and tour our facilities, interact with the education, and things for the kids. We've got all kinds of things going on. We've got our facilities open on Tuesday, the 21st, All Things Water. That's going to start at Stockbridge at 5:30 PM, and then we'll carry on over to our central treatment plant and provide tours in there as well. There's going to be free food and things for the kids. So come down. You don't have to worry about dinner. We've got that covered. On Tuesday, we'll be over at 1415 Harrison. That's up on the north side, just off Patterson. And again, we'll be, that starts at 5:30. And then we'll be back at Stockbridge for the last day for All Things Public Works. So these are great events. We have booths set up for education. One of those booths will be participated by our Human Resources Department. So if you're interested in working at Public Services, come out. That's a great opportunity. I believe we did hire one applicant from our event last year as well. So that is a great opportunity to engage with us and find out what jobs are available in Public Services, as well as the work we do and how we can do work for you, how we interact with you to provide clean, safe drinking water, to treat wastewater, and then all the aspects of our Public Works Department. So thank you very much. We look forward to seeing community members out and about with us on the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Baker. Appreciate it. Commissioners, now is the opportunity for us to adopt the formal agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda any Commissioner would like to have moved to the regular agenda? See none? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to move an item from the consent? Yes.
G23.
G23 will now be moved to the regular agenda. Thank you. Next is Communications. Manager Ritzma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now is the opportunity for public comments for our business meeting. Just a reminder, if you would like to make a comment, please come forward. You will have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. And if you would like, when you're done or before, you can write your name down if you wanted here in our minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tina. I live on Lake Street. I live in the known floodplain area where your storm drains flood out the streets and backs up the storm sewers into the groundwater and in the streets. We have standing water in the streets for days, which can't be healthy to be trapped in. But yet you are still trying to destroy our last green space on Lake to Stockbridge. Been fighting this for seven years now. As James Baker calls us, "The Bow of Kalamazoo, the lowest point in Kalamazoo." Why would you destroy another in the last green space to build your Hawthorne project, Mayor Anderson, when you could build at the old DHS empty parking lot right across the street from our last green space? We are in a climate change. We need to save mature trees, natural watersheds, wetlands, green spaces, especially in known floodplain areas. Our wildlife in Kalamazoo don't have many homes left, where you have destroyed their homes to build. Why has the city not did an environmental study of this space and all the wildlife we have? We have lots of bats, and a lot of them are rare. We have a baby owl. Not going to name them off. We only have three minutes to talk. Why has the city not did an environmental study of this land being destroyed? How much worse it will make flooding for the poor homeowners when this beautiful space is gone? Here's an idea. How about your rich developer buddies who have already built all these apartments? The average person can't afford 1,200 to 1,400 for a studio? Really? Why is rent so high in Kalamazoo? If the money-hungry landlords would quit jacking up rent so high, all the homeless families that work would be able to afford a home. Rent and rent control is your answer to families and homes, not the destruction of green space in floodplain areas on contaminated land. Lower your rent prices, for they are ridiculous. I've worked two jobs, and I can't even afford that. The problem is, no one never listens to us. You don't listen to our concerns. I can't say for the whole meeting, because we're going to get a lot of heavy rain, and your ponds are full. And I'd rather be trapped at home than trapped out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to take advantage of this public comment, period?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll write my name down afterwards so we keep the meeting moving. This is something positive I want to talk about. I'm looking for information for the FUSE program that Bronson started. Those of you that have been on this commission a long time might know anything about that. It was a homeless project that Bronson Hospital started back in 2018-19. And Bronson was awarded quite a few awards for this because it was very successful. But the only thing I've found on it is the rewards and how successful it was. But I'm having a hard time finding if it's still being used. My understanding was that it stopped because of the nonprofit they were working with wasn't real great about handling it. But it included mental health. It helped them find places to live. So if anybody has any information on that or wants to look into it, get back to me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to make a public comment? See no one? Yeah, please come forward.
I'm Michael. I've been here 48 years. I'm an alumni at KVCC in the 90s. Now, we got the KVCC building down here, right? We got the gardens over here. Now, the KVCC academy is pretty good. It's long. 150 East Crosstown. No, no, they moved out of there. There's still cops there. But I would love for my alma mater, KVCC, and academy to be down at 150 Crosstown. Because guess what? We have one building down there. We have one building on 9th Street. We have 150 Crosstown, and then what's the other part? Is that KVCC too? And then the garden over there at the skate park? Oh, there'd be five or six campuses for Kalamazoo Valley Community College. So that's just my observation. I know it takes money and time and coordination, but just think about what I'm talking about, because you know what? The more cops you got learning the two-year degree to be a cop, right there. It might protect our citizens who ain't got nothing and never had nothing in Kalamazoo. It might protect our citizens who ain't got nothing and never had nothing in Kalamazoo. That's it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to make a comment for our business meeting this evening? All right. See no one? Next is Public Hearings. Mayor Ritzma.
Item F1 is a public hearing to receive comments on the Program Year 2024 Action Plan required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, Mayor Ritzma. I presume we have a presentation on this?
Yes. Our compliance specialist, Julie Johnston, is a brief presentation. Julie?
Welcome.
Everyone, I appreciate your time tonight to do a brief presentation on our HUD programs and the 2024 Action Plan. Okay, so the City of Kalamazoo is a participating jurisdiction to HUD, which essentially what that means for us is that we are an entitlement community and get HUD funds every year through the CDBG and Home Programs. HUD requires us to have two documents to be able to receive this funding. The first is our Consolidated Plan, which is a five-year plan that outlines our priorities for those five years. And the 2024 Action Plan will be the last year of our current Consolidated Plan. So next year, when you see me, I'll be up here talking about a new Consolidated Plan. And then the second is our Annual Action Plan, which essentially outlines how we want to spend our funding for that one year. In our Consolidated Plan, we have four main priorities, and they're not in any particular order on the screen tonight on this slide. But those priorities are affordable housing, neighborhood enhancement, youth development, and working towards ending homelessness. So I'm going to take just a couple minutes and talk about the two programs that we receive funding under. The first is the CDBG program. This is the longest-running black grant program that the Department of Housing and Urban Development manages. And in fact, this year, 2024, it is the 50th anniversary of the CDBG program. The intent of the program is to create viable communities through housing, economic opportunities, and improve living conditions. To utilize this funding, each activity must meet a national objective. There are three national objectives that we can slot activities under, but the majority of the work that we do in Kalamazoo falls under the low-income, benefiting low-income families and households. We do also use some funding towards spot blight removal. That's hard to say. So not only do we have to meet a national objective, but the activity also has to be under a category that HUD allows us to fund. So those categories are things like housing rehab, public facility improvements, code enforcement, demolition of blighted structures, like I said previously, and public service activities that support low-income and special needs households, and that's just to name a few of those CDBG programs that are allowed. The next grant that we receive from HUD is the Home Program. This is the largest federal grant that is specifically for housing. We can use Home dollars to create new units, to rehab existing units, to support development of units through acquiring property or doing site improvements. And we can also pay for tenant-based rental assistance with Home dollars. One of the big differences between the Home Program and the CDBG program is an affordability period. CDBG, essentially, you qualify a household at the time you are providing them the service. With the Home Program, there is a long-term affordability depending on the investment that we have in an individual unit. So as you can see from the slide, any new construction requires a 20-year affordability period, meaning low-income families are the only families that are allowed within that unit for a 20-year period. Okay, so for 2024, our program year, which begins on July 1st and ends June 30th, that is our HUD program year. This is the allocation we receive from HUD this year. Unfortunately, it is a little less than what we received last year. It's about $23,000 less of CDBG funding, and unfortunately, $114,000 less in Home funding. This is disappointing in our Home Program, because as you can see, it is the smaller of the two allocations. But when looking at all of our funding, it'll be just a little over $2 million for the 2024 program year. Now, with that said, some of you may have heard last week, on May 7th, Vice President Harris announced that there was a $5.5 billion allocation or appropriation to HUD. And the intent of that is to boost affordable housing, invest economic growth, build wealth, and address homelessness. The very next day, May 8th, HUD announced our 2024 allocation, which is less money than we expected to receive. So we're not really sure if this new allocation of funding is eventually going to come to Kalamazoo. We are hopeful, because many of the programs that are being funded under this appropriation are for entitlement communities. So we're hoping we may see some. If not directly to the city, then it will come to the state, and we might be able to access it through the state of Michigan. The graph on the slide shows you a 20-year look at our funding from HUD. As you can see, it has gone down over the years, which every community is experiencing that. The last seven years, the CDBG program has been relatively stable. With Home, we have seen some increases and decreases, which makes it a little more difficult to predict what we're going to get each year in our Home Program. So in the 2024 Action Plan, we are funding three of our main priority goals from the Consolidated Plan, and you can see that housing and neighborhood enhancement will receive the majority of the funding. For our housing activities, we expect through CDBG and Home to have 20 new rental units created. For our homeowner repair programs, we expect 73 households to either receive some type of critical repair, be assisted with accessibility issues, get a roof repaired or replaced, and do some lead-based remediation. For neighborhood enhancement, this is where we utilize our CDBG funds to cover most of our city activities. And so this is going to be our community policing, code enforcement, demolition of blighted structures, and we'll do at least one improvement to at least one public facility in a CDBG-eligible neighborhood. And then for youth services, we will be, if the action plan is approved tonight, we'll be funding the Parks and Rec After School Youth Program, and also the Kalamazoo Friends of Recreation Financial Assistance Program. The hope is that at minimum, 46 children will receive a benefit from these dollars. Each year, HUD requires us to do a specific public process for the action plan. We need to do a 30-day public comment period and two public hearings. The City Commission approved the public comment period after a recommendation from our Community Development Act Advisory Committee, which occurred in February and March. And then that same advisory committee held their public hearing at the end of March, and then tonight is the final public hearing for the plan. We have received a few comments during this process. We received some comments related to supporting seniors and towards more affordable housing, particularly for households that make 0% to 30% of our area median income. And we are certainly taking those into consideration as we look towards the new Consolidated Plan in 2025. So finally, tonight, we're hoping that the City Commission will have two actions, and the first would be to approve the 2024 Action Plan and associated budget. And then the second is in your consent agenda, which is to approve the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development as the authorized city representative and the certifying official for our HUD documents. And I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission might have.
Thank you so very much for being here and for taking us through that. Questions, Commissioners? Yes, Ms. Schoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Julie, for this very thorough presentation. I just wanted to kind of like scratch you and see, like, what do you think attributed to the decrease?
So the HUD appropriate, or the allocation to us comes from the appropriation that HUD receives from Congress. And then there is a formula that they utilize to determine what cities are going to receive. And the formula, I downloaded this tonight because I thought it might be a question. The formula looks at several objective measures, according to HUD, of community needs, which is poverty, population size, housing overcrowding, age of housing, and population growth lag in relationship to other metropolitan areas. I personally think it's probably more related to the appropriation from Congress. But again, as I stated earlier, there was this announcement of $5.5 billion, so that might eventually show up in Kalamazoo. Fingers crossed.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
It is the case in that calculation that population size is going to be a big driver of the number at the end in the calculation. And there actually is not, I would say, been a population increase in Kalamazoo, particularly relative to maybe some other areas. So those kinds of calculations would certainly affect at the end. I really don't think it's related to some measure of the effectiveness in the program. I think you're doing a good job. But it's the calculations that drive that.
Right. And interestingly enough, in our research for the new Consolidated Plan, we did find that Kalamazoo has lost a little population, but we have increased in household size, which means our housing, our household size is decreasing. So we have less people, less people living in households, which means more households.
Any other questions for Ms. Johnson at this point? Yeah, Ms. Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Julie, for the presentation. So I was kind of looking at some of the information that is on our business agenda that we're going to be approving, possibly approving this evening. And I see we have $400,000 that is allocated for the city housing and inspection code team. Can you talk about what that team would be doing with those funds? What kind of inspections, code, like what does that money wrap into?
Yep. So it does go to pay for staff on the code enforcement team, and they do both code enforcement, like blight and trash and tall weeds and grass and things like that, but also housing inspections are included in that through our rental inspection program. And then you'll see on our budget that we also have a program to help people who have been cited for code enforcement. It's our Code Enforcement Repair Program. We partner with Community Homeworks to help with that. So many years ago, HUD came to the city and said, "If you're going to fund your code enforcement program, you have to have options for those people to get help in improving what they've been cited for." So that is the Code Enforcement Repair Program. And our staff, they work with the households, refer them over to Community Homeworks to try to get those repairs done.
Okay, so for clarification, that would be for staff?
That's it. Staff costs.
$400,000 for staff cost?
Yes. For both code enforcement and housing inspections.
And how many individuals are on that team?
I'm not positive. Maybe, oh, I don't see Antonio here tonight.
Sure.
Twelve? With the housing inspection? Sorry. I think it's 12, but I'm not positive about that.
Okay. And so you talk about the...
Cheryl is signing to be 11.
11? Okay. And when you talk about the Code Enforcement Repair Program, so is this specifically for homeowners? Is this...
Yes. So it's funded through CDBG, which allows us to help single-family homeowners who meet our HUD's low-income requirements. So it's not going to be able to help everyone. If they, if someone is cited and does not meet low income, then they can't be helped with the CDBG program, but there might be other funding sources that we can help that family with.
And just out of curiosity, do you know, you know, before a homeowner is fined, about how many, how many communications do we give to these individuals?
I'm not involved in that part of the process, but just having worked with some of our code enforcement staff, I know that there are households and units that they've been working with for years to try to bring them into compliance. So it's certainly not, "We talked to you once, and then we send you a ticket."
Is there, and again, this might be again for the, for Director Mitchell and his team, but if you know the answer, I'm going to ask the question. How long do we normally let someone go? Or how many times can they come back and get these funds? Is it like a one-time you get these funds? Or if you continue to have code enforcement issues, do we continuously go back and give the same individual the funds?
No. Typically, we would try to address whatever code enforcement issues there are in one application to the program. But I, it's a fairly new program, so we haven't had any repeat clients. It's been in place for about two years now. So I think that's the best answer I could give this time.
That's good. I appreciate that. So on the next page of your, there's another page here within the presentation, and we have the new construction, you know, which is required for 20 years of low affordability. What is that range of low affordability, if you know that, for our residents here within the city?
Yes. So for the Home Program, it is 80% AMI or below. Now typically with our Home Dollars, we try to support low-income housing tax credit projects, which typically are 60% AMI or below. But HUD does allow us to also support 80%. And then, of course, those units have to either utilize home rents or HUD's fair-market rents for those families.
Okay. And we all know here that fair-market rents within the City of Kalamazoo are a little bit high and some of those things. So you talked about the new funding, the $5.5 billion in the funding. How are you guys getting a handle on that? Do they give, are they giving technical assistance? Are we looking for technical assistance to know how these grants really work, what they're for?
So on the HUD's webpage, the $5.5 billion is specifically spelled out in which programs are going to be funded. CDBG and Home are two of those programs. We will be working with our local HUD office, which is in Detroit, to find out if, you know, how that is going to trickle down to the state of Michigan, and then potentially trickle down to entitlement communities.
Thank you for that. And just one more quick question, you know, as we start to, you know, I know all of our team will take this into consideration, especially with some of the priorities that the Commission has set forth at our retreat, really hoping that we really keep in mind looking and attracting more developers that are wanting and willing to build housing that is 80% AMI and below, because, you know, that is, you know, something that we definitely need here within the city. that is 80% AMI and below, because, you know, that is, you know, something that we definitely need here within the city. And I know that, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to find other avenues of funding to where we can have other developers walk alongside, you know, Hollander Development, who does a great job at developing really affordable housing. So, I just want to keep that at the forefront as we start to build our 20 and 25 master plan. You know, I was just kind of looking at the units of how many units you need that are multifamily within that range. So, I just want to make sure that we really keep that at the forefront when we start to put together our 2025 plan.
Yes. Thank you. We will, for sure, and the city commission's goals.
Thanks, Commissioner Decker. Other questions for Ms. Johnson at this time? All right, seen none. Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks.
Seeing no more questions, now is an opportunity for anyone who is here in the chambers to comment on this item. If you have any comments on this particular item, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. Seeing no one that wants to comment, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve the program year 2024 action plan and action plan budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support. Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. Any more discussion, commissioners? All right, seen none. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Clerk, I'll be abstaining from this item because of the nature of my employer. He's been a recipient of CDBG funds for over a decade.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Borling, and thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next is our consent agenda. City Manager Rissman?
All right. We have 24 items on the consent agenda this evening because we've not met for a month. So, just sit back and relax, and I'll read all 24 items, so. One, G1 is approval of a one-year contract extension with StanTech for water rate and water financial consulting services in the amount of $117,330. Next is the approval of a contract extension with Tree Works Incorporated for neighborhood tree maintenance in the amount of $139,044.40. Next is the approval of a contract extension with Tree Works Incorporated for hazardous tree removal in the amount of $165,678. Next is the amount, the approval of a memorandum of understanding contract with University of Notre Dame for the purchase of continued downtown West End planning in the amount of $150,000. Next is the approval of a contract with AECOM Great Lakes Incorporated for the development of Safe Streets for All, sidewalk lighting and bus safety stops, bus stop safety plan in the amount of $199,266. Next is the approval of a contract with Reith Riley Construction Company for repaving the Central Station in the amount of $219,724.94. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Peters Construction for auto flesher installations in the amount of $242,200. Next is the approval of a contract with Sinclair Recreation for park improvements at Southside Park through the Omnia Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $324,553.05. Next is the approval of a three-year cooperative purchasing agreement with People Driven Technology for rubric security cloud backup and recovery software in the amount of $416,059. Next is the approval of a three-year contract renewal with Trace 3 through the My Deal Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of Cisco SmartNet licenses in the amount of $751,923.04. Next is the adoption of a resolution of support to apply for federal funds through the local bridge funding program to replace the bridge structure on Crosstown Parkway. Next is the adoption of a resolution of support to apply for federal funds through the local bridge funding program for preventative maintenance on the Lover's Lane structures. Next is the adoption of a resolution of support for the local bridge funding program to apply for federal funds for the structures on Stockbridge Avenue and Reed Street to receive preventative maintenance. Next is the adoption of a resolution, delegating authority to the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development Department as the official representative and certifying officer for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Grant Documentation. Next is the adoption of a resolution recognizing the Corporal Christopher Kelly Willis Foundation as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Next is the adoption of a resolution recognizing Outfront Kalamazoo as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Next is the adoption of a resolution recognizing Jesus Loves Kalamazoo as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Next is the approval of the following budget amendments for the fiscal year 2023 budget. Increase revenues by $443,952 and expenditures by $372,186. And for the fiscal year 2024 budget, increase expenditures by $413,052. Next is the authorization for the city manager to sign a letter of agreement with Michigan Bell Telephone Company, doing business as AT&amp;T, to extend the existing right-of-way permit for five years pursuant to the Metropolitan Extension Telecommunications Right-of-Way Oversight Act. Next is the authorization for the city manager to sign a letter of agreement with KEPS Technologies Incorporated, doing business as ACD.net, to extend the existing right-of-way permit for five years pursuant to the Metropolitan Extension Telecommunications Right-of-Way Oversight Act. Next is the rescind Foundation for Excellence Housing for All Agreement in the amount of $100,000 with Northside Association for Community Development for Tiny Houses of Hope. Next is the approval of a sub-grant agreement with HOPE through Navigation for Treasury SLF, RF, ARPA funds in the amount of $100,000 for the Tiny Houses of Hope project. Next is the approval of mayor's appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions and committees. The reappointment of Matt Hollander to the Downtown Development Authority and Downtown Economic Growth Authority Boards for a term expiring on March 31, 2028. Next is the appointment of Michelle Audette Bowman to the Planning Commission for a term expiring on March 31, 2027. Next is the appointment of Ian Smith to the Planning Commission for a term expiring on March 31, 2027. Next is the appointment of Wendell Tolbert to the Planning Commission for a term expiring on March 31, 2027. And finally, approval of the appointment of Jay Sherston to the Building Board of Appeals for a term expiring on March 31, 2027.
Good job. Thank you, Manager Rissman. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 22 and 24 and 25, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So...
Motion made by Commissioner Cooney?
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes, but I'm abstaining from G14 because of my employer.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. Now, we are on to H, our regular agenda. Manager Rissman?
Item H1 is approval of a contract extension with G&amp;H Oil Incorporated for gasoline, diesel, and biodiesel fuel in the amount of $1,100,000.
Thank you, Manager Rissman. Is there a staff report on this item?
There is not, but our Director of Public Services, James Baker, is available if there are any questions.
Any questions, commissioners? All right, seeing none. Now is the opportunity for anyone who is here in the audience who would like to comment on this item, this item H1. If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and whether you live in the city. Seeing no comments. The recommended action, commissioners, is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda, Ms. Ida, H2. City Manager Rissman?
Approval of a contract with USA Earthworks LLC for Streets for All improvements on Mishikel Avenue in the amount of $1,937,308.25.
Thank you very much, Manager Rissman. Is there a staff report on this item?
Yes, we have Director Baker, who will be giving a brief overview of the project.
Thank you, Director Baker.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Managers, City Commissioners. Just wanted to give a real brief overview of this project. This is our first execution of the Streets for All plan, so this two-way conversion has been up here before the city commission several, several times for various phases and aspects of engineering and planning. And this is our first construction project execution of that plan. This project will be carried out in two phases. The first phase is the work that we, that you have in front of you here today, which is going to be the side of the road towards the railroad tracks. The second phase, which is going to be the side of the road, kind of toward the Allen Platt neighborhood, that is going to occur in coordination with our PROTECT grant work. So, the projects are actually kind of split apart because that is going to be the corridor for the new Arcadia Creek. And so, we're going to coordinate those projects together. Some details about this project, we initially bid it out some months ago. That bid process resulted in the project coming back at 60% over budget. Our team of engineers took that back and looked at the schedule, so we created a more flexible schedule to offer more contractors some leeway with project schedule and that sort of thing. We also removed work related to water culverts, things like that, because of the PROTECT grant. And then, we removed the signals from that because the procurement of the signal mast arms was something that was rather problematic for the contractors during our first attempt. So, we were very pleased with the budget that then came back for this project. You see, the total project is somewhere around $1.9 billion, which is substantially less than what our project budget is for this of about $3.5 million. So, that difference of about $1.5 million is going to go back to Management Services Director, CFO, Mr. Vincenzi, to apply for future streets projects. Now, streets dollars can only be used for streets projects. The project's going to get completed. We're going to start work in June, and then by November 1st, it'll be completed. We can drive on it. When we drive on it, we'll still be driving one way. It's not going to come back over till two-way until we finish our work in coordination with the PROTECT grant. And then, we also finish Kalamazoo Ave. So, this is going to present the first of several projects, some of which may be rather obscure when we're doing the work because we're going to do the work, but put traffic back on in the old pattern, and then, you know, kind of convert it when it's ready. I do want to provide kind of an overarching schedule of the Streets for All execution plan. So, Mishikel, half of it will start in 2024, June through November 1st. PROTECT grant, that Phase Zero is starting right now on Westonage Avenue. And then, work will carry on into 2025, '26, '27, and '28. West Main and Douglas, that area between, on West Main from around Douglas all the way back to Mishikel and then Michigan Ave, that work is going to occur in 2025. Kalamazoo Ave work is going to occur in 2025 through 2026. And then, ultimately, Michigan Avenue, 2027 through 2028. So, we're here now in 2024. This plan that we have in front of us is rather ambitious. And at this time, before you're here today, I'm proclaiming that we'll have everything done by 2028. I will state that may be subject to change as funding and projects have to be coordinated. Overall, this is a very big step for, for the city and for public services. It was some time ago where we transferred ownership back over from MDOT, something that hasn't occurred in the city since 1964. So, the streets are back under Kalamazoo ownership. And now, we've got a project that is in the execution phase, along with several projects right behind it. So, truly an exciting moment. We're really excited to move forward with this. And I'll pause there and just answer any questions from any commissioners.
Thank you very much, Director Baker. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Baker. We have a lot of projects going on in the city right now. Can you talk about the importance of being able to coordinate all of these projects at once, especially when it comes to this, and why we may be working to do many of them all at once?
Certainly, there's not one answer that can go to all that. So, certainly, you know, folks in Kalamazoo, this construction season started off certainly with a bang back in March. In Kalamazoo, we were active with our construction schedule before MDOT and before any other agency. We did that because we knew we had a full season of construction ahead of us. We've got a lot of projects that we've got to get done. If you look at the south side of town, I'm talking about White's Road, you know, Westonage Avenue, the Inkster Street Bridge, all those projects are all kind of right in the same area. So, as a, as a driver or a homeowner or resident, or somebody that's looking to seek and visit one of our Kalamazoo businesses, all that work seems to be in the same area. It can be very frustrating for drivers. That work was planned and constrained by funding. If you remember, when we pre-purchased Water Main, there was a time where we couldn't get Water Main. We couldn't start a project. MDOT would not allow us to start a project without Water Main available. So, we could have started these projects and had them separate, although there would be a big hole in White's Road, and there'd be no Water Main to put in it. So, we had to wait until we had all materials in hand to be able to start and execute that project. Inkster Street Bridge and other project that's in that area, we didn't have the funds locally to do that project. That is funded by federal transportation dollars, federal bridge transportation dollars. And that's, this year, is when the dollars came. So, a lot of this was predicated, the schedules were predicated on when the funding was coming in, and then, what ability we had to start the project or delay the project while we procured materials. So, it was, it was kind of a rather perfect storm that created all these projects that are happening all together. Now, the good news is when we're done, we're done, down there in that aspect of it. Now, moving north, kind of into our downtown area, we've got some media release items that are out, some work that our communication manager, Mike Smith, and Neil Conway have put together to show and kind of articulate what projects are now going to start happening downtown. We've got a Consumers Gas project that's happening. We've got some Consumers Energy reliability projects. We've got a water utility reliability project. And we've got some projects that the Invent Center are all coordinating. Kind of in the park, Westonage, Kalamazoo corridor there, north of Cooley. We also have a project that started last year on Ransom Street that's going to go on through this year. That's a big 42-inch diameter sewer, all-new storm sewer, all-new Water Main, and everything through that corridor. So, certainly, as motorists, as residents, as business owners, we feel like we're kind of squeezed and pinched between all these different construction projects. And so, this is yet another construction project. This has been heavily coordinated, the schedule's been heavily coordinated with work on Westonage. So, Westonage actually serves as the detour for the Mishikel project. And so, we're not going to start... not going to start work on Mishikel until West Nidge is back open. But there's been tremendous amounts of investment here in Kalamazoo from federal dollars. But just looking at 2023 and 2024 alone, in water and wastewater, we've brought over $28 million to the city of Kalamazoo from state and federal sources. On the transportation side of the house, nearly $75 million has been brought in and will be executed on projects from now through 2028. So this is a great opportunity, a great opportunity to bring federal and state resources here into Kalamazoo, and, you know, it's, it's time for some infrastructure reinvestment. And there are a number of projects I left off the list that are also contributing to congestion and driver frustration. We've got a bunch of Water Main replacement happening up in Kalamazoo Township's Westwood Neighborhood, so certainly I want to acknowledge that. That's a, a project to replace nearly 10 miles of Water Main in the township. That's something that we haven't done in a very long time. That me, that main needs the work. That Water Main up there in that neighborhood dates to the 1940s, and so when we look at Water Main material age, condition, and break history, that's something that we want to make sure we're staying ahead of that, because of just the number of Water Main breaks that we have every year, about 100 on average. As that work is going on, we actually had a Water Main break on West Main, kind of over the weekend, that shut down traffic completely on West Main. That was not planned. That was a, you know, Water Main break emergency that just kind of happened, and it's another reminder of the aging infrastructure and our need for reinvestment.
Thank you for that, and that's a great segue into when you talk about our aging infrastructure and what we're doing right now to update that infrastructure and how we're coordinating and planning everything together. The roads are our assets. You know, we took back that particular strip of road back in 2019 from MDOT, so that is our asset. That is our infrastructure. That is something that we have to plan for and, and care for. And so I'm excited that all this is going on. Yes, I don't like having to go every rich route. There can be, but I know that it needs to be done, and I also believe that what you're doing is also setting the city up for a great, for great asset management as we move forward, and some of the things that we want to do and some of the things that we want to plan. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other questions for Director Baker? Yes, Commissioner Cooney.
Director Baker, is this money, grant money? Where's this money coming from?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. So this, this project, these dollars right here, the $1.9 million, that's our Act 51 dollars for City Kalamazoo. So that's our own bond proceeds dollars that we bond for here locally, and that we pay back via debt service with our, with our streets dollars. This local funding does help us in terms of our match for our RAISE grant and some of the other federal grants that we've been going for. So it's local dollars here at the local level that are special allocation, so they're just for streets, and they do help to offset our, our local share for some of the federal grants that we have been receiving for these projects.
So this money could only be spent on streets?
This money could only be spent on streets. That is correct.
Other questions for Director Baker? Yes, Vice Mayor Hess.
A question. Okay, so the Mishikel project, is, is that also water infrastructure, or is it just redesigning and redoing culverts and things? Is, is it?
It's, it's mainly intersection and road, so it's going to be a whole new roadway, new intersections up at Kalamazoo Ave. The, the way the intersection connects to Kalamazoo Ave is going to be completely different. The way the intersection connects to West Main, completely different. This project will not do any Water Main work, and it won't do any culvert work, big culvert work. It will have storm drains and all-new stormwater infrastructure onto the street itself. When we do the PROTECT grant, the PROTECT grant, it's kind of brings the creek all through the Mishikel corridor. That's going to be kind of on the, the east and, and south side of the roadway between the Allen Platt, where the houses are, and the roadway itself. When that work occurs, there's going to be upgrades to sanitary sewer system that's going to happen all throughout that area, and upgrades to the water system as needed to accommodate the new route of the new creek.
Super. Thank you. So, and just curious, the break that happened on West Main, which affected some of us, when, when an emergency break happens like that, do we have to pull folks from other projects that are going on around this, around the city to help with that?
Yeah, correct. You know, that's a good, very good question and a good look into the Department of Public Services. Unfortunately, we're not quite to the level where the Maytag man is. We don't just come to work and sit in the corner and wait for a Water Main break. So we do have day jobs, so to speak, and we're out doing that work. And so specifically for this Water Main, as staff were leaving to go home for the night, they were noticing perhaps some water in the road, were questioning whether or not was that attributed to rain or something else. There was also flushing occurring from the Water Main repairs in the neighborhood on Wealthy Street and Pinehurst and that sort of thing. And then something changed, and something changed very quickly, and the whole intersection flooded up to, like, the doors of the cars. And I got a call from MDOT at about 8:30 at night to, that, to respond, and that we, we needed to respond quickly. And so most of our Water Main reports that come in, we have over 100 Water Main breaks per year, come from partner agencies, folks like MDOT, or, you know, one of the Township Fire Departments, or Township Police Departments, or our own Public Safety Department. We don't have automation that tells us when there's a Main break. We just rely on the community to let us know where there's a problem.
Thank you so much, and thank you for attending to that, and it was open two days sooner than it was supposed to be. So kudos to your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Other questions for Director Baker on this item? Don Ceni, I just want to ask you a brief thing, and this is outside of the scope of what we're talking about at all, but if you could just make a brief comment about how we helped our partners to the south related to public service activities and that sort of thing, over this, you know, very, very unfortunate weather situation, tornadoes.
Yeah, certainly. I, I know this is a little off the topic at hand, but, you know, we're members of MyWarn, which is, it's a utility cooperation of mutual aid, very similar to what our police and fire departments have around Kalamazoo. And so if there is a public utility or public works agency that's also a partner of that mission cooperative, will respond immediately upon called. And so we were ready to respond, to help out City Portage. There's a lot of other agencies helping out down there as well. We've got a, a full crew that has been going down to Portage now every day since, I believe, Wednesday the 8th, and they're going to continue to do so while work continues to happen. So we're happy to do that. That's something that, you know, every time we have significant events, and, you know, thinking back to the flood in 2018, when Kalamazoo needed help, various snow, snowplow events, winter events, the ice storm, you know, we were in conversation with public services directors from City Battle Creek, City Portage, City Grand Rapids. If folks remember, City Grand Rapids came down and, and gave quite a bit of help to City Kalamazoo during our ice storm. City Battle Creek gave a lot of help to us during the 2018 flood event. And so we all are just partners in this work, and sometimes it's not in City Kalamazoo that City Kalamazoo crews are working, you know, we're help, we're here to help the, the broader community.
Appreciate that. That's helpful. Thanks so much for that. Looks like there's no more questions. Then now is the opportunity for anyone who's here in the chambers, if you have a comment on this item. This is item H. Two. Please come forward. You all have three minutes. State your name and number of you live in the city. Seeing no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All right, seeing none. Kurt Burling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. We do now have one more item on our regular agenda. It was consent agenda, item G. 23.
Acceptance of a grant in the amount of $98,000 from the Irving S. Gilmore Foundation to support a crime analyst position in the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety, and approval, approval of an associated budget amendment and a position allocation.
Thank you, Manager Rissman. I know you weren't prepared necessarily to make a, a report on this, but I see Chief Boyson is here. Do you want him to tell us a little bit about it?
Sure.
Chief? Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor Commissioners. Yes, we are requesting acceptance of a grant from the Gilmore Foundation to support a position of crime analyst for the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety that we will embed with our Criminal Investigations Division. We know gun violence and the reduction of gun violence is the number one priority of the City Commission, and is our number one priority also. So to further that, back in September of 2021, we got our first embedded crime analyst in the Detective Bureau. That was, again, the first time we've had that position, and we thought that was important back a couple years ago, because investigations have really changed a lot in the last several years, and we rely more on technology and data to solve crimes way more than what we used to. And so that takes specialized training and skill and time that our detectives really oftentimes don't have to dedicate to that type of work. So our detectives are out in the field interviewing witnesses, victims, gathering evidence, and while they're in the field, we have a crime analyst dedicated to analyzing that information back in the Detective Bureau and putting all that together. And it's been kind of a heavy lift. So in 2023, we had 21 homicides in the city of Kalamazoo, and currently our one crime analyst is supporting 18 of those 21 homicide investigations. And each investigation takes anywhere from 12 to 24 months to investigate, go through all that data, and present for prosecution. So it's a really heavy lift, and what we're seeing now, especially from 2023, our one crime analyst is tied up in court a lot, which is actually a good problem, because that means a lot of our homicide cases are getting charged and they're going to prosecution. And so one of the things that we've noticed in the past, we're, we're seeing much improved clearance rates on our homicides and better prosecution, because in the past, we would hand the prosecutor's office maybe a report that could be 200 pages or more, and say, read this report, and we would like charges authorized, and that's kind of a lot of information to read through. So now we give them that report, but also our crime analyst prepares a storyboard. And that storyboard is a visual image and overlays all of the different data and information we use to paint a picture of what happened, what the suspect was doing before, during, and after the event. And with that visual image, we are seeing much greater success in our warrant authorization and our prosecution of those cases. And so that crime analyst is critical in that, and again, we are asking to get more support for that one position right now. Again, the, the positive note is, some of these strategies, including increased prosecutions, are showing that we are holding people accountable, and that's one of the things that I think is helping us to reduce the overall, overall crime rate in the city of Kalamazoo. So I just, actually coincidentally enough, our weekly crime statistics come out every Monday, and I just pulled the data. Year-to-date, we are down in violent crime 12% from where we were this time last year, and we're down 23% in violent crime from where we were two years ago, which is significant. Assaults with firearms are down 21% from where they were last year, and 30% from where we were two years ago. Overall, reports of shots fired incidents, where we have confirmed shots fired, we're down 51% this time from where we were last year, and 34% from where we were two years ago. So I, again, there's not just one thing that's helping with this. There's many things at play here, but our crime analyst is certainly a significant contributor to helping us make sure that we bring justice to some of these victims and their families, and hold people accountable, and hopefully deter other people from engaging in, in gun violence. So it's a very important thing, and we really appreciate Gilmore Foundation's support for us as we seek to fill that position.
Thank you, Chief Boyson. Very helpful. Questions from the Commission for the chief? All right. Thank you so much, Chief. Appreciate that. Seeing no questions, now is the opportunity for anyone in the chambers to comment on this item. Please come forward at this time.
Good evening. Jeff Messer, city resident. Thank you, Chief Boyson, for that summary of what the crime analyst does. He said we have a one crime analyst now, and they would like to add a second one. And, you know, I'm just concerned about the city's growing surveillance apparatus, which the city began growing almost four years ago in June, actually February 2019. The city's surveillance apparatus has been growing for five years now. That includes the citywide FUSIS Live Video Surveillance Network, the Flock License Plate Reader Cameras, surveillance cameras installed at traffic signals, Amazon Ring Doorbell Cameras, the, the 10-years of unlimited video and data storage system, and also the personal data that the city may be purchasing from third-party data brokers. So no one probably is bothered if the city's surveillance apparatus is being used to prosecute homicides or other serious crimes. So I'm wondering, is that, is what we might call serious crime? Is that all the surveillance apparatus is being used for, or are there occasions when it's being used to harass targeted groups? Also, one other question. I noticed there's a new license, what appears to be a new License Plate Reader Camera installed on the southeast corner of South Rose Street in Walnut. The city's original Flock License Plate Reader Camera system was installed in about 35 locations in, what, the summer of 2021. And now that I see that there's a new camera that doesn't look like the old ones, I'm asking if Public Safety can disclose whether they're installing a second round of these cameras. The public does deserve to know of the city's growing surveillance apparatus and how it is being used. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who would like to comment on this item?
I've got two things I want to talk about. The crime analyst position and the FUSA monetary, because I would like to do that. Now, what, what the chief said was, with one crime analyst, I think he gave a number of about 18 to 24 months. Now, this is my question about that time. Is that convicted, the, the, is he free, or is he sitting in the jailhouse now for 18 to 20 months while the crime, the one crime analyst puts the case together? Or is he free for 18 to 24 months for that one guy to get enough leverage to charge the man? So you understand what, what I'm going with that. One crime analyst, what'd he say, homicide, 18 to 20 months to put it together to, to prove guilty? If he in the jailhouse for 18 to 20 months, the one crime analyst, I feel safe with that. But if the guy's free, and they're doing investigation with one crime analyst, and it's taking that one crime analyst 18 to 24 months to build the case, to give the charges, you know what I'm saying? Now, the other thing is the FUSA, the door ring bells. I looked into that. Now, what they told me was, there's a modem tied to the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety. If you buy the ring doorbells and you install it in there with your own dollar, you, whenever thing that, whenever a intruder comes, or, or, or it blinks, it goes to the KDPS network. You know what I'm saying? I'm a Comstock Township. When I called Lieutenant Moran, I got, basically, they just went Kalamazoo City, but I could have got the wrong information. But as a homeowner, I would buy the ring doorbells, the modems, and install it to be hooked up in the network of the KDPS, just for peace of mind and, you know. So yeah, that's all I got to say about the, the, those two things, man. I'm Mike Foot.
Thank you, sir.
So do I go back to my seat? Do you all ask me questions, or? So do I go back to my seat? Do you ask me questions or?
This is the time for you to make your statement.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Is there any else in the chambers like to comment on this particular item? All right, seen no more comments. Commissioners, the recommended actions, the motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Any further discussion, commissioners? All right, seen none. Kirk Berlin, please call the call.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next, reports and legislation. City Manager Rissman, do you have a report?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Every so often, I like to highlight what's going on in certain departments in the city. So this evening, I want to give some highlights for our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Department, led by Director Tanya Hewitt-Smith. Some of the work that they've done is, as part, or one, our deputy director Ashton Anthony is chair of the, was chair of the 2024 Parks and Recreation Conference. And he and Director Hewitt-Smith led a DEI panel focused on the topic. So this is Parks and Recreation Departments from across the state. They, the topic was importance of inclusion. And along with them were our Assistant Chief Victor Green, a member from out front Kalamazoo, and the Director of the Center for Cultural Agility, and the VP Chief Diversity Officer from Bronson Healthcare Systems. So good representation of Kalamazoo at that conference along a important topic of inclusion. Also, DEI staff are spearheading a DEI Advisory Board and DEI Council within the city. And that was a recommendation made by NPHI in the assessment they conducted in 2020. So we're excited about getting those two groups together of departments and representatives from departments. And finally, DEI Director Hewitt-Smith was partnered with our Human Resources Director Shelley Dusek to implement a transgender policy and egregious behavior policies. So those are being implemented as we speak. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. And, Commissioner Rissman, I really do appreciate, sometimes in all this business work, we can forget to recognize things that aren't on our agenda, people that are doing that great work in our city all the time. So thanks very much for lifting that up. I appreciate that. And I know that Tanya's here this evening, right? So... Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Any, anything else, Commissioner Rissman, for us than this evening?
Nope, that's it for my report, Your Honor.
Oh, okay. So now is the opportunity for Commissioner comments. And is there anyone who would like to start with that? Mr. Cooney.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to mention two events that I went to since we met. One was, a number of us here were at that Urban Alliance event, which had a couple hundred people there. And it was wonderful to hear and see the wonderful work that they're doing in stopping violence in the city, in helping people who are long-term unemployed get back to work, and helping people who have been incarcerated to get re-lined in the community. And going, I know that the mayor especially goes to their graduations when we see them, after they go through that program. And it's just such exciting to see them back on their feet and ready to get going. So that was great. So I really appreciate the great work of Urban Alliance. The second was a program, I know a program, but I didn't know about this, this kind of event that they did. I was at a meeting, not a meeting, it was a program that was put on by The Promise with the great Director Von Washington Jr. And they had about a hundred young men in that room, almost all of them black. And these were either mostly all seniors, but a few juniors, I think. And they were working with these young men to try to get them to take advantage of The Promise. And they had in people from the community who were role models speak to them. You know that The Promise is for higher education, but it's also for skill development and for getting licensed or something. And it was really great, the tremendous work that they're doing with those young people. But as I watched it, I thought about how these guys aren't at the same starting line that a lot of young people are. That as young as they are, they've already had all the impact of systemic racism, poverty that has deeply affected their lives. And we know that the number of young men from our high schools who are taking advantage of The Promise is far from what it should be. And I thought, this has to be a huge part of our work, a part of the work of the city. And it's not something that we start when they're juniors and seniors in high school. It's something that we start when they're born. And I just think that this has got to be the most important kind of work we do in the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, mayor. I also want to echo off what Commissioner Cooney has also said. A few of us attended the change of status graduation. And it was the first one that I had been to, you know? It was held at the Experience, and it was, it was good to hear the individuals' stories, you know? Especially one gentleman had been incarcerated for a very long time. And speaking with him, you would, you would not have known it at all. And I think this also goes to show something that we approved this evening on our consent agenda, which is the project of Gwyneth Hooker through the Hope Network. And specifically, what she is doing is creating housing for individuals that have been incarcerated, that have had abuse, that again will not find, that will have many barriers against them to find housing within the city of Kalamazoo and anywhere, I believe. So I definitely wanted to lift that up. And I also wanted to say that, mayor, your question to Director Baker regarding how we were able to respond to our next-door neighbor, the city of Portage, when they needed our help, and we know that many cities and communities have also responded to them. And I know Mayor Randall and the residents of the community in Portage are very appreciative for the assistance and the help that we're, we and all the communities that surround us are able to do. And then I wanted to talk about just the housing in general. There are a lot of funds that are in the pipeline, coming down the pipeline, state, federal, city grants that are available to all cities. And I want to make sure that within our city, we are able to bring as much funding as we can to the city and to the residents of Kalamazoo so we can build housing, affordable housing, AMI from zero to one hundred and twenty percent. And we really need to make sure that we're looking at all avenues of funding that we may not have within the city that we can bring here. And we really need our developers also to really begin to look at how they can make a change in the lives of the residents here when we are really building housing that fits between the AMI of most of our population here within the city of Kalamazoo. So I just want to up the fence, and I want, I would love for some of our developers to come to us and also say, hey, this could work here, this could work there. What other things are they using that we may not have here within the city that they can also bring expertise to us on? Because we don't know it all, and we don't proclaim that we know it all. And the only way that we're going to grow is by opening up our doors more to developers and individuals and organizations that may know a little bit more than what we do. Not saying that we don't know a lot, but we, no one knows it all. And I think really, when we put our heads together and we come up with ways, we're really going to start to tackle the housing and the discrepancies and the disparities here within our city.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Anyone else who was, want to make some comments for this evening? Vice Mayor Hess?
Yeah, first of all, we gave a proclamation to Manny Barch tonight, a pioneer in football for females. We also, tonight, I want to send my sympathies and condolences to the family of Sidney Williams, who also passed. He was a light here in Kalamazoo and provided so much leadership here in the city. Passed on May fifth. And I do hope that we'll pursue a proclamation on his behalf as well. But he made history in football by being the first African-American quarterback in Big Ten football at the University of Wisconsin. So that's an interesting connection with, with our proclamation this evening. But he, he was such a light here in Kalamazoo. He served one term on the Kalamazoo County Commission, thirty years on the Board of Trustees of Borges Hospital, the Board of Trustees of Allen Chapel AME Church, Board of Directors of Comerica Bank, Board of Trustees of the Douglas Community Center, and so much more. And he was a part of a group of African-Americans who worked to make the Kalamazoo City Commission more diverse, successfully helped elect Gil Bradley as vice mayor, Moses Walker as commissioner, and Beverly Moore as the first African-American mayor of the city of Kalamazoo. So again, sympathies and condolences to the family of Sidney Williams as we mourn his passing. Tonight, we, on our consent agenda, there were several infrastructure upgrades. And the names on those that put those forward, I want to give a shout out to Anthony Ladd and George Waring because they've been doing a lot of work on behalf of the infrastructure of the city of Kalamazoo. And they are, they are to be commended. These are Safe Streets For All, the All The Roads Project, all the construction projects. They are the ones that put those agenda items forward. So thank you, Anthony and George, for that. I really want to give a shout out to Johnny Berry, to Patrick and Evan in our Parks and Rec Department for putting together the first PAL, Police Athletic League, T-ball, and a coach pitch baseball at Versus Lewis and Dickinson Fields. It was on April twenty-seventh, on their opening day. Baseball hasn't been there for children in decades. And it was so, so fantastic to feel the energy of the families and the kids and to see the kids playing with one. It was, I cried. It was so amazing and so powerful to see these kids playing and being coached well. Evan Gray, just really a fantastic coach. And so the energy there at Versus Lewis and Dickinson. If you have an opportunity any Saturday morning until June first, please go out to Versus Lewis and Dickinson and cheer those kids on. Also, a shout out to our fire engines who show up and are there to support the PAL. And so the kids can also interact with our Department of Public Safety. So thank you, thank you, thank you, Patrick Mavery and Evan Gray and Johnny Berry. So our city's moving forward. We're doing really good things. There's a lot of things going on in the city of Kalamazoo, all of them, all of them showcasing the great heart of Kalamazoo, whether it's storm relief in Portage, whether it's stepping up and programming for youth, or whether it's our public safety working day in and day out to keep us safe on the streets of Kalamazoo. Thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, mayor. I'll be quick. I just wanted to say to Chief Boyson and to Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety that I had the opportunity to attend the Citizens Academy this weekend. It was a full day. It was, it was eye-opening. It was impactful. I'm still buzzing from it. I just want to say it was such a wonderful opportunity to see what it's like in real time, but simulated what our officers and what our chiefs and what the department goes through on a daily basis. We have no clue. We have no clue. And so I just want to say to you and the entire department, I really appreciated being there and for that experience. And I urge anyone within our community, the next time you have an opportunity to apply, to go, please do so. It will be, it will change your life and your perception of public safety in a very huge way. So I thank you again, chief, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Powerful opportunity to get to do that. Other? Yes, Commissioner Pradel.
Thank you, mayor. I'll also try to keep it brief here tonight. We had opening day of the farmer's market on May fourth. It was a beautiful day, but it was especially neat to see, I mean, it was jam-packed. It really represents, when you go out to a farmer's market on a Saturday, really the best of our community. Nonprofit partners, local vendors, it was just a neat day. I took my boys there, and we did some others' day shopping there, too. I also want to thank CPED, our Community Planning Economic Development Team, for taking residents seriously. I guess a good example recently, Building Blocks, who does a lot of like street-by-street, block-by-block mobilization with residents, had some concerns, and they brought those forward. And I feel like especially COO Lamb and the CPED team really took those seriously, and they heard pretty quickly back on some of those concerns as well. So I appreciate that quick action. And then lastly, I just want to recognize the three folks who just got appointed to Planning Commission. I mean, that is not for the faint of heart in terms of appointments. You have to be truly a resident expert at that work. And it's really, it speaks volume of the talent that's in this community that we have, such a neat pool of people who are going to be serving on that Planning Commission and have a lot of work that ends up coming to us. So congratulations to Michelle, Ian, and Wendell. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. As our past and current representative to the Planning Commission, you attend all those Planning Commission meetings as well. So I honor your dedication to fulfilling that responsibility. Yes, little head shaking is worth it. Those can be long meetings. But it is also a recognition that there are many, many people here in the city who deal with sometimes very challenging local issues and do that work and volunteer to do that. So I agree with you, and thank you, Commissioner Pradel. We, I will, I will make, Commissioner, no comment? Okay. So I will make a brief comment. Just a reminder, though, which seems to be getting to be the par for the course. We do have a closed session this evening after this. We will be adjourned, though, once we, we won't be coming back for action after our closed session. But I just wanted to recognize a couple of things here. I got to go to a very lovely ribbon cutting, which is over in a little bit of a hidden spot here, over in the, what's that, Hilton Gardens Hotel space. And it's a little off the beaten track. And Mika Phillips, I believe is the name of the entrepreneur there who's been doing dessert and wedding cake work for a long time and is making that really courageous step of moving into having, you know, a piece of real estate that she has to keep cash flowing in to pay the rent and keep customers come through the doors. And I know she, this was also a business that we have helped through our processes to help entrepreneurs get started here in Kalamazoo. So I'm super proud that she's downtown here, and this is just an advertisement. Everyone that's all over social media, make sure you know that she is there, she's available. She's going to be having some lunch and breakfast items also, even though dessert is what she leads with. So that's the one place in town where you can definitely go and eat. that's the one place in town where you can definitely go and eat dessert. First, it's supportive. We did have a gathering of bike enthusiasts here, which a lot of people came to Bronson Park over the weekend. So that was a very nice gathering. This is Bike Week. So it's a kickoff for that. And of course, we hear about it in a variety of ways, both supportive and also not fully supportive, around the bike infrastructure that we're trying to work on here in Kalamazoo. But this is, I can tell you, this crew that was there on Saturday, very supportive of it. So it was a pleasure spending some time with them. With that, we do need to have a motion to go into closed session. So, commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and an attorney-client privileged communication. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman. Supported by Mr. Decker. Clerk Billings, please call the roll.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion is approved. I want to thank everybody that spent time watching or attending this meeting here in the chambers. I love you, Kalamazoo. We are adjourned. Dirt floor.